Okay, it's 6:30. I call tonight's meeting of the Dalton Select Board to order. We'll start with signing checks.
You went back, another signature.
Now we'll wait to look at one for a while.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, that's fine.
It looks like we're doing okay for cash balance.
So far, yep. So far.
But that's without the start on the road repair.
Right.
So we still need to keep that long.
Yes.
I'm asking.
Yep. Um, we have a abatement request from the tax collector. There was a lot 408651 that was separated from 408090 in error when the tax maps went into that A-Access GIS software. Um, I've been trying to solve this since I started doing the tax collecting and Gary couldn't ever really give me any help with it. The new assessor went through files and looked online and looked at old maps and said that determined that it is in fact part of 408090. They are already paying the taxes on the
The, the thing that was listed.
That lot that was listed as separate, but it shouldn't have been. So um there's $302.04 worth of taxes that have been sitting unpaid because that property was being double taxed essentially. Um, so the paperwork is here from the assessor and he basically said, I just need to ask for an abatement for that. And uh, he's already gone through the assessing software and fixed it and re- merged those two pieces of property that should have never been separated to begin with. Yes.
It seems like he's doing a really good job.
He's yeah, he's a, a no frills kind of assessor. I like it.
Just straightforward and looks.
Straightforward and just gets it done. Yep. Oh, that'll clean up a bunch of old tax bills that are sitting on our books.
I make a motion that we approve the abatement of $302.04.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hardest time would care for the animals to survive. For an animal like a bad watch, it would have to take a lot of calories.
So many. Do our tax warrant, the first one for 2025?
Hold the bill.
Rate hasn't changed.
I make a motion that we approve the sewer tax warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a yield tax warrant for timber. There's two pages that need to be signed, pages two and three.
I make a motion that we approve the yield tax warrant. The timber yield tax warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
New gravel tax warrants.
I make a motion that we approve both of the gravel tax warrants.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
New notice of intent to excavate. Did you guys motion to sign those?
I don't think we usually motion on the intent to cut, intent to excavate. Do we need to? I don't think we usually do.
I think you usually do.
I make a motion that we approve the two intent to excavate.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now you've got me wondering.
Yeah, I think we do.
I'll have to go back and check.
It's probably better to do it than not.
Yes. Um, meeting minutes from April 14th.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 14th.
We get the two changes. Should we do? One is a first page. Uh, the minutes for Monday match the for a public hearing on unanticipated funds were presented to the board. Should the price be put in that?
Oh, that's a good point. Good. Um.
I don't.
Forty-three thousand and
Hold on a minute, there's can I see that? Yeah.
Was that we approved the minutes?
This is just saying that you approved the minutes.
Right. You're saying that we could, on the minutes for that, we had.
The minutes had the dollar amount on them, but this is just saying that you guys approved the minutes from the public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, we could insert that about. I don't have it all, the exact amount.
I don't have it off the top of my head either. I don't have a problem adding it. Uh, March 31st, it'll be on the bulletin board. Hold on. Yeah, forty-three, three oh eight, seventy-five.
No, it's forty-three, something I just couldn't remember for sure.
The second page is uh of the there's a ninth sentence down. Uh, you need to add uh Jill Beth said she took the initiative in hopes that the board would approve, which we did. But that just needs to be in there, if you would please. You know, to the planning board for that sale of property.
Yeah.
I think it says it.
What does it say?
It says, um Jill Beth, because this has dragged on so long in discussing and providing an update on the sale process of the planning board, completed and submitted a subdivision application to the planning board on April 2nd, 2025. The select board voted to approve that action retroactively as it was done to keep the sale moving forward.
Yeah, but you said that you took the initiative.
Oh, they took the initial, okay.
Yeah, it just needs to be put in there without the board being involved.
Yeah, that's why it says retroactively. You guys approved it retroactively, which means it happened before your approval.
Yeah, I think it says it, but I, I'm trying to think how to put that in so it reads smoothly.
It says, in order to keep it moving forward, she did it, and then the board approved it retroactively. Which is saying that she submitted it prior to board approval.
Seven, five.
Okay.
So I think I made an emotion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye, yeah. Didn't talk tonight.
Approved with the addition of the um, month of the public hearing for unanticipated funds inserted.
Yep. Um, non-public meeting minutes one and two for the same day, April 14th.
I make a motion that we approve the non-public meeting minutes number one and two from April 14th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then I just have this notice, the final tax date form that I have to fill out as tax collector, I'm supposed to provide it to the select board so they can review it. Just stating when we sent out the last tax bill, how often we bill, and that there were no taxes being abated.
And the supplemental tax warrants don't include like the sewer tax and timber tax and things like that, correct?
Say that again. What is the question?
Because were any supplemental tax warrants issued that may be appealed under RSA seventy-six, call in sixteen dash A?
Yeah, it would include any of those supplements, but none of those are appealed either.
That may be appealed.
Correct.
So we did issue supplemental tax warrants. But it's no there. Should that be yes, because we issued them? So they could be appealed, correct?
Yes, I saw that as that were appealed, sorry. Sorry.
No, I'm just.
I was trying to get to what you, what the question was.
Yeah, and I wasn't, yeah, I just.
All our supplements have been paid.
And so really, you're just providing it to us. You don't get us to take an action on it.
Nope. I just have to sign saying that I provided it to you.
To this left, whatever, yes, sir.
You could see it, yeah.
The tax bill to who?
The residents.
Oh, okay.
This is just a standard form showing how we do it every year.
And that it was done.
So I can show that yes on there, or you scratched up now?
Yeah, I'll put my initials.
Yep.
Well, I have her signature.
Okay. Do we have an update on the county shore, country shore and blue bags?
Uh, yes, I got the blue bags. Um, the road crew brought me blue bags on Friday. So I'll get in touch with Sam and he can come pick them up and pay for them tomorrow.
Okay. How many should they, how many do you have to take to begin?
He's gonna take twenty-five of each.
Um, regarding the Upton Hatfield invoices. I know I look that we had just gotten the day of our last meeting. I look through and some of them are, you know, I agree, I agree with. There was one we mentioned that I don't think is ours. The others were all Eric's. Did he provide um, a log of his interaction so we can verify the invoice?
I've not gotten it.
Okay, so we probably need to wait for Eric then. The Bean property update, we just had the public hearing, um. The planning board approved the subdivision of the half acre lot. And so the select board at the same public hearing had the first public hearing to present it to the public. That will eventually sell that half acre to the beans. We'll have a second public hearing as required in two weeks.
I got a question, um, why is it mandatory that you do two weeks? I mean, you tell them, you know, we're gonna do it, I, I.
We have to have two public hearings.
That's just the law.
That's the law.
The state statute.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, says so, I guess so.
Yep. Um. The other thing is the draft could claim deed didn't have the water rights and Carol did look at the water rights and the language from the old original deed can be inserted. And I was going to send that to our attorney. But then when I looked at it, also had the section for the, when the subdivision was reported, I thought I'll just wait and do it all together at one time. So that's still in, going to be another step with the attorney.
Yeah.
Okay, Smith Road.
Uh, still waiting on their insurance and their bond. I inquired about that again today. They wanted to start as soon as the road van was lifted, so um, I didn't hear back before the meeting.
Have the road vans been lifted?
Yes.
I know they've been out grading.
Yes.
So that's good. Um. Insurance and bond usually comes quicker than that, right? Or not always?
It just depends.
Time of year.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we're having a school board meeting in Dalton on May eighth?
Yes.
And that's at six o'clock?
I think so.
Will that be in this room or in the gym?
The gym.
And then at our last meeting, we talked about the post-closure report for the Old Town landfill. And you and Eric were going to look at it because there's some pending items in that.
Oh, for hours, yes.
Yeah.
I went through that and I actually talked to, uh, just a second.
So in that Horizon Engineering?
Yeah. I talked to them and I, Adam's got the signs. And I don't, he didn't say when it's gonna come out, but I'm gonna swing by and tell him I'll help him put them up. And there was another part that, uh, I didn't understand enough, so I called Valerie and I talked with her. They're coming, Valerie Karen, they're, they're coming to do their next inspection next month.
Okay.
And she is going to let me know, because I said I'd like to be there to go over all this stuff so we know what, what's what, what needs to be done. And so that's where we're at that, uh.
Okay, because like, I think one of the things with, um, a methane reading, and I don't know that we have the monitors in place for that.
That's the thing, that's why I want to meet with her, because I mean, uh, how do you, how do you, how do you take care of that if they're not already there? They may have to drill or something.
Okay.
But, uh, I'll, that's, those are the questions I'm gonna ask when, uh, when they come to inspect. They, she said usually after the first mowing is when they like to come up.
Okay.
She said, here's a little thing.
Okay. Okay, the Conservation Commission, do you have updates from that? The.
Conservation, um. They did their cleanup, I.
Do they do it Saturday with the rain?
Yeah, they, uh, Mike was out picking up bags. I see little bags all over the place, and I saw Mike out there picking them up.
They did do, there were some people that came and got bags ahead of time because they couldn't do it on Saturday. So there was, whatever was out there was picked up, but we actually moved the official roadside cleanup to this coming Sunday, May fourth.
Yeah.
From nine to twelve with the barbecue afterwards at the fire department. Uh, just because there, the rain was just non-forgiving on Saturday.
Gina gave her resignation, but she rescinded that and is still on the board.
Okay.
And another thing I want to bring up, uh, coming back from my daughters, there's a great big pile of trash and a bit pull up, pull off up here.
Mm-hmm.
There's, uh.
People added to it.
Yeah.
When they found out we were doing a roadside pickup.
Is that, well anyways, who's picking that up? Is that, is the town gonna, uh, highway department gonna go and with their dump truck or, because there's quite a bit there.
No, we'll do it. Those that do the roadside pickup. Yeah.
I think.
I mean, really, the state should do it, because it's their road, but it's, some of that stuff has been there since last fall. So I guess if we continue to wait, it might look like a landfill.
Yeah. So I.
And that's the same place we had trouble with mattresses a few years ago, right?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we put a camera out there somewhere to catch whoever's putting that stuff down.
It's not our property.
But we could talk to the state to find out why, I mean, why? Because they're gonna continue to do it if we don't find out who's doing it and stop it.
I agree. But it's a state road and the property that it butts at is not town property, so.
Why can't we talk to the state about it? Can't we do that?
Well, we can, but we can't make the state do it.
No, but we can ask them if we can do it.
We can.
It's just a, it's just a thought. I've got it out there for discussion.
You know, with the camera, then we'd have to, somebody would have to look at all the footage of it and try to identify who it, who it is, so it's not.
They have a, they have a, you know, cameras, the wildlife cameras that they put out.
Yep.
And they can actually go on their phone and look at them without even going out there.
Yeah, you have to have a phone service, a phone service contract in order to do it, because it works off of Wi-Fi. So there's a cost to that.
Yeah.
Um.
Because there's no Wi-Fi there.
Yeah.
I think the first thing that, because it's not just there, it's other places too. Uh, Mike took a picture of furniture and bags and stuff that was dumped on Faraway Road. Um. From what I understand, before, people would take pictures and send it to the police or they'd find out who did it and the police would go and talk to the people, but nothing was ever done, because we don't have an ordinance against littering. Even though the state has an ordinance against littering on state roads, the town doesn't have an ordinance, so I don't know if it would even do any good, because the first step is you've got to have, you got to have a law that's being broken, right? Or an ordinance that's being.
But I did it, the state police was there looking at it, going through it, trying to, I assume he's going through trying to find a name or something.
Yeah.
But anyways, it was just a thought. I mean, it just, it's just sad to see a big pile of crap there every time you turn around.
Yes, so we might want to think about ordinance. Now, I know with the animal ordinance, we took that to town meeting. This one be that we just need a public hearing or?
I don't know. I, I just, I know that in speaking with the state police, the first step is to have an ordinance. Because you can't charge with someone with, charge someone with wrongdoing if you don't have something saying it's wrong, even though we know it's wrong. So.
So, and you're sure we don't have one?
I didn't see one in the book.
Okay. Yeah, I just haven't looked at the book for.
We have a loud noise ordinance.
We do.
Yeah, for like loud cars.
Okay.
We have one of those.
Yeah, so I mean, the camera's a good idea. I just don't know how we'd get Wi-Fi to it.
Right, right.
So.
I don't either. I just, I just thought I'd throw it out there if somebody knew more about it than I did, you know, I do. Probably if you asked one of the kids, they could probably.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
What's that?
Ask them that motion activated.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. But you've got to have Wi-Fi or you've got to have somebody going and getting the pictures off of there and somebody monitoring it. And I think it's just a little bit more complicated than it seems.
Well, I have to agree with you because I don't know nothing about it. I mean, I could, actually, I could go see my brother, he's a hunter, but maybe he could give me some info.
Okay, so maybe we can talk about it again another time.
Yeah.
Okay, with the planning board, um, we have the update that we provided with the Bean property, where we shared the public hearing and they did approve the subdivision that the select board submitted. The host community agreement hasn't met since our last select board meeting.
That's the next, uh, next, next time we get together.
Crew, right, I'd have to check my calendar for the.
Any third, I think. Or is it the nineteenth?
When did we skip?
The nineteenth, May nineteenth at six thirty. Yep. And I sent out a couple of sample agreements from Coventry and Bethlehem, and I think Wendy was going to pull up some other ones and send, but I haven't seen anything else. Okay. Um. The meeting for the solar grant is in May, so we don't have any updates on that, correct?
Um, correct. I did get, I, well, I did get an email from the state saying that the funds, they have the funds and they are ready. They're there, they're.
Okay.
So I said, okay, and she asked if we were ready to move forward with it, and I said, one of the stipulations was that ensuring that the funds were there so that we would be reimbursed when the work is done.
Mm-hmm.
I saw the email. I'm just making, putting that out there to you that that is how it was stipulated in the warrant at town meeting. So if you're telling me that the funds are in the state and they can be dispersed when the project is done, then yes, we're ready to move forward.
Okay.
So we'll talk more on May sixth and.
I'd like to, I'd like to, a copy of what I'm saying that.
The email?
Yeah.
I can give you a copy of it.
Yeah.
And can we use the contractor who gave us an estimate?
Yep. We can use whoever we want.
Okay. And then the, um, last meeting for the hazard mitigation grant was canceled, so the next meeting is in, is towards the end of May?
Yes.
It is. I think it's, I don't have it on my calendar, but I think it's May twenty-first.
Is that a Wednesday?
Yeah. I have two and I won't be able to make it. That'll be posted on the website.
Yeah.
Okay, all our road repairs and FEMA funding?
Um, I spoke with FEMA last week, we had an update. Um, they're waiting to get a letter from Adam who's supposed to get it from DES regarding three culverts that will require a permit or, um, a letter from DES stating that no permit is required. So FEMA is waiting for that in order to finish their cost loading for the last twelve roads. Um, I'm waiting for that FEMA cost loading in order to finish the mitigation plan for those last twelve roads. So we're, we're waiting on that. I met with Adam today and he said he would get right on it, um, you know, and try to get me whatever it is we need from DES.
Okay.
Um. Union, Harriman and Briggs Road are with the state, so once the state reviews it and signs off on it, then it'll come back to us to confirm any notes or any comments that they made on it, and then it, um, goes back to the state and it goes to, um, funding. And then Blakesley, there was some verbiage changes that they needed to make between FEMA mitigation and FEMA repair FEMA, the regular FEMA, there's like two groups. Regular FEMA that does the in-kind stuff and then FEMA that does mitigation.
Mm-hmm.
So there's some wording that has to be worked out between those two. Uh, it's been two weeks. I asked them what the delay was. They said they were waiting to get the notes as far as the changes that needed to be made, so we have an update again on Wednesday.
Okay.
Um, otherwise that that Blakesley is done, we're just waiting for them to finalize what they need to do.
Okay. And the funding's still available, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
And they have the contract, uh, for Smith Road. The signed contract for Smith Road, so we're moving forward with that as well.
And then, um, Adam's got recruitments out there for
Yes.
Roadwork, so.
For full-time and a couple part-time, uh, well, they're full-time but temporary. Yeah, we have one permanent and two temporary positions.
So are we ready for interviews?
Yes, um. If we can do them next Monday, do a, do a working session, um, I think he has three people that he wants to call in. Three, maybe four. That he wants to have come in. So.
Um. I could try to be here by six thirty. I can't make it any earlier than that.
That's fine. It shouldn't be a late night. It's just gonna be interviews as far as I know.
You think Adam can make it then?
Yeah, I talked to him already.
Okay. Anything else with the roads?
No, um, we do have something with mowing though.
Okay.
It's kind of in that category.
Okay.
So I received an email from Nelson Property Services stating that the bid that they were, or the proposal that they gave us for ten thousand eight hundred dollars was a mistake and it was for a different job. Last year's bid was twelve thousand nine sixty and that would be this year's price as well. Uh, in addition to that, they're stating that, uh, spring cleanup on the premises is, um, in addition to the regular price, and that would be an additional two thousand one hundred sixty dollars. So we went from ten eight to twelve nine sixty to fifteen thousand.
And last year we paid twelve nine sixty.
Yeah. So I talked to Adam about it. He said that they could do the spring cleanup, you know, getting the rocks and the stones and gravel and stuff out of the grass and, and things like that. He didn't understand why it would cost two thousand dollars to do that. Um, there are, I did also talk to Brian Parks, who went through the cemeteries today and said there are some ruts and stuff in Cushman that need to be taken care of, filled in, um, which is understandable since Smith Road is nonexistent and the, the, um, the Smiths have been using Cushman in the forest behind in order to get to their house, um.
And those probably need to wait till the roads rebuild before you fill them in.
Well, yes and no. I don't know exactly where they are, so, um, I also talked to Adam and, you know, brought up someone in town, maybe a town employee doing the the lawn care. Um, obviously, the big concern is making sure that the cemeteries are done correctly and that there's no damage to any stones.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Adam thought that, you know, if we went out and got a zero turn motor mower and a couple other pieces of equipment, that it could definitely be done and it wouldn't cost more than what it would cost us to hire the contractor. So, um.
Cause what were we probably, what, three or four thousand dollars?
Uh, well, you'd wanna, you wouldn't wanna get a residential zero turn. You'd probably wanna get something more on the higher end, just cause you're gonna use it more often, so. Maybe not more often, but more. You're gonna be cutting more. You'd probably look at five or six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I would think.
So if we did that, that.
Higher than that?
Uh, the contractor of fifteen grand, we don't have to use them, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Ten to twelve.
I think that's a good idea.
You're saying ten to twelve?
Yeah, because we just bought one in industrial, zero turn, ten to twelve is what we're looking at.
Well, the, um, Webster on, uh, Northumberland. He's got the zero turns and, uh, I bought one, uh, and it's a fifty-four inch car. They've got bigger ones. And I bought that one for fifty-four hundred and, uh, they're really, really good, uh.
Yeah, I mean, we bought a zero turn. They're, they're great.
Yeah. So.
But it's not, I mean. I understand the, the industrial part, but it's not gonna be used for eight to ten hours a day, every day, like it would be with a landscaper. You know, it would be one or two days a week. Um, so I think we need to get something in the middle there. Um, something between like industrial and
Yeah.
Residential, something in the middle, you know, that's why I said probably about six grand, you can get a decent, a decent one that you're not gonna be running for eight to ten hours a day, like you would if you were doing
I believe.
A landscaping.
Uh, miss.
Yeah.
Jeff Webster too will bring it out, let you try it first, see if you like it.
And then we would need like a good weed whacker and.
Well, yeah, you can get a, get a gas powered weed whacker blower. You'd need a push mower to do certain areas that you can't get with the zero turn, but you know, at least then you get a few, at least a few years, three to five, six, eight years out of the equipment. I mean, right now, we just have a mower, a tractor mower that puts along, um. Adam said that they could do it. I asked him if it meant that they were gonna need to add another person this summer. And he said, maybe, maybe it's just someone, someone that they have on, you know, on the team already that you know, fills in and does that a couple days a week or one day a week, as opposed to working over here type of thing. So he seemed to think that we could do it, you know, that we would at least get through this year and, you know, try it and see how it goes. So he was, he was for it.
So by the time we got the equipment and paid staff, we're probably gonna pay about, we're paying for this.
Yeah.
You think it's gonna be less?
Yeah.
By the time we have staff hours?
What's that?
Staff hours?
I think so.
Oh, the staff hours.
I mean, you're probably looking at one day.
Okay.
One day, once a week.
Okay. One person.
I can, uh, I can swing up to, uh, Webster's and bring, uh, some, uh, paperwork over back so you can look at, or just have, uh.
I could probably just go online. I could probably just go online.
Yeah, you can do that too.
Cause I think we need to make a decision, cause we need to move forward on this.
Well, yeah, I, I, I was a little shaken, honestly, at the fact that they sent an email three months after they were told that they were awarded the work. And a week or two weeks before they're supposed to start. You know, that you're increasing the contract by twenty, twenty-five percent, and then on top of that, spring cleanup. It just.
Yeah.
And I did reach out to the other contractor who gave us a proposal, um, whose price was ten five. You know, um, and he said that his, his schedule for this year is booked and I, I mean, I said, hey, if there's any way you could get us in, let me know, but he's not responded, so.
Cause if the, if we paid twelve nine sixty last year. I could see doing that this year, but a couple thousand with the spring cleaning on top of that, just seems like.
And that's kind of a villain, why he's waiting to get something else done and do for one of the guys, like you said there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know if it's something that the highway department can continue to do year after year after year, but I guess you don't know till you try, and if you're gonna spend about the same amount of money, then.
And we talked about this a few years ago.
Yeah, we've talked about it a few times.
That, just let's say that you decide to use the, the ball field that you got set up. It's perfect to mow that, mow that down and, uh, you can do so much there with it.
Yeah.
They, they do a really good job too.
Yeah, the zero turns are pretty nice.
So do we wanna make a motion that instead of going with Nelson, we'll buy equipment and do it in-house?
I make a motion that, uh, we, uh, buy the equipment in-house.
And our department staff that.
Yeah.
Okay, I will second that, as long as Adam's is in support of that.
He, yeah, he was.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We even upped it on the twenty twenty-four audit?
Yep, we're pretty much almost done. He's not got the audit report completed yet. But I sent him all of the documents. He sent me the list of sampling that I needed to provide all the backup for. I sent that to him last week, Thursday, Friday, or just Friday, um. Got all of that information sent over to him. He sent a draft of the MS five thirty-five, um, to review. There were a couple changes that I made. Um, he had combined a couple numbers and I broke them back apart, uh, based on the five thirty-five, the, that we submitted, the, and what our expenditures were, um. I sent those back to him late this afternoon and haven't heard back. So, uh, the five thirty-five is ready to submit for, um, DRA's review and approval. I just don't know if he's gonna do it or I will, so I'll probably find that out tomorrow.
Okay.
So we should have something as far as DRA's comments on that shortly. And the five thirty-five is just basically what, what was appropriated and what was spent, which is the same information that was provided in our budget hearing and, um, in the book for town meeting.
Another one of the DRA forms.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's got five what?
MS five thirty-five. So that'll be, once DRA makes comments on it or makes any changes to it, then that'll be a, I think that's one of the documents that the select board signs executes for DRA.
Do we have any other new business?
Uh, no, I just had the mowing. Mowing, that was it?
Okay, then we're ready for a public comment. I did wanna mention, I know, um, at the last meeting, Robin brought up about minutes. And I went back and I looked at those, um, meeting minutes and it was in February, February twentieth that you had brought up that issue and all the documentation is in there and because it didn't affect a decision or a policy or a vote or anything. I don't think we need to modify the, the meeting minutes from, um, January twentieth or January twenty-second, because it is covered in the February twentieth. Um, meeting minutes.
The twenty-seventh, right? The twentieth and the twenty-seventh?
January twentieth and twenty-seventh and February twentieth is what I.
Yeah, so February twentieth is when you made the comments and it is in the meeting minutes.
Yes.
Under public comments. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm going to call Conford and just verify that.
I'm sorry, take it.
I said I will call Conford and verify that, because meeting minutes is supposed to be written as to what was said at the meeting and they're not.
But meeting minutes can be, they're a summary of what happened in the meeting. They're not verbatim. And any decision has to be covered in the meetings, minutes.
I will, I'll call.
Okay.
Cause it's right to know.
Okay. Are there any public comments tonight? Okay. Any other business?
Just, uh, did you send that bill out to Casella to help them pay for that? That four hundred and something, did you say there was a, uh?
No, um, I think you said it was about four hundred dollars, but I have to look at the bill and see, and are we only sending that? Are we only sending that item?
If that, if it's to do, do with the, with the.
Host community agreement.
What you do is you put it in the letter and, and ask them if they would pay for that, because it's you, you, you know, there was very, very.
Yeah, yeah, yep. So you want me to send them anything that has to do with the host community agreement and ask for them to pay for it, as far as legal goes?
That, well, right now it's to the.
And the, and, and try to include that agreement that we did with Casella?
Yeah.
Try to include that. The agreement to, to pay for it. And I don't have any non-public.
Good, we get to go early.
Hmm, yeah. It's good, um. I make a motion to adjourn.
And I will second that.
No way.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven thirty-four.
Wow.
Good night.
Record. Good job, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you.